Good evening. If a Scataway Township Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Korea News. Notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building. Notice made available to the township clerk. Notice sent to the Korea News and the Star Ledger. Ms. Buckley, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Present.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Ms. Saunders? You're muted, Carol.
Here. Sorry about that.
You're okay. It's early. Reverend Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Yeah.
Mr. Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Ahmed? And Madam Chair?
Here. We will now recite the pledge of allegiance. The flag is over my right shoulder. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have, can we swear on the professionals, please?
Yes. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give would be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Are there any changes to our agenda, Mr. Barlow?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item number twelve, twenty-three PB thirteen slash fourteen V ten Marion Court Trust has been postponed until the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. The applicant had already noticed, so there'll be no further notice, but if anyone's on the meeting for the ten Marion Court subdivision, that matter will be heard on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. That is the only change to the agenda that I'm aware of.
Thank you. May I have a motion to pay the duly ordered bills, please?
Reverend Kenny, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Adoption of the resolution to memorialize action taken on September the thirteenth, twenty-three.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the resolution twenty-three PB eighteen for Rockefeller Group Development Court for Preliminary and Final Site Plan.
Madam Chair, if I may, before the the board votes on it, in reviewing the resolution that I prepared, I noted I left out one item, which was no overnight parking on the on the property or on Normandy Drive overnight parking. So the resolution that Ms. Saunders had, I I just have to add that line into it so that it's memorialized and part of the resolution. But with that comment or that amendment to what has been presented, I would ask that the board vote on it with that tweak, if I may.
So the board should, uh, can we have a motion then, including the, including that amendment?
Okay. Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the rest resolution for Rockefeller Group Development Corp. For Preliminary and Final Site Plan with an amendment for no overnight parking.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Item B. Madam Chair, I'd like to memorialize the resolution for eighteen PB thirty-eight slash thirty-nine V for Corporate Park Associates. Ten Corporate for rearranging of the internal office space.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number nine, adoption of the minutes from regular meeting of September thirteenth.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the minutes from the regular meeting on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number ten. Discussion redevelopment plan for the property designated as lot thirty-four oh one, lot twelve point oh two, et cetera.
I believe Mr. Clarkin is here for that, Madam Chair.
Mr. Clarkin, are you ready?
I am ready.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Okay. Yeah, Sharon will get started. All right, so this is the redevelopment plan for the Claussen Street and Bakeland Avenue area. It's all the block and lots in front of you. It's also including portions of Claussen Street, Brook Avenue, and Field Avenues right of ways. So I will begin by scrolling down to page. So yeah, I will walk you through this redevelopment plan. I'm gonna start on page B to kind of give you an overview of the plan and the context of what we're talking about. You can also refer to the map at the end of my plan for a aerial figure. So, um, yeah, so basically the redevelopment plan poses a number of light industrial uses that will be permitted in this area that it was designated as an area in need of redevelopment when I presented the study either last month or the prior month. And all these uses actually fit within our, your current LI one light zone designation for light and heavy industrial character of that surrounding neighborhood. And so therefore, these proposed uses are consistent with your master plan. So it's a little reminder where this area is. It's about twelve point three four acres in size, and it was sixteen lots along with those portions of those three municipal streets that I mentioned. So this area is in the northern portion of the township, pretty close to the border of the Borough of Middlesex with Possum Town Road on its east and then River Road all the way to the west of it. So it's closer to the Possum Town side. But a majority of the area is really vacant wooded land and forest as it stands today. If you remember, there were about three parcels that I testified to during the study portion where there are two residential structures that were in kind of bad shape and were designated in need of redevelopment, and there was a lot of vehicle storage. So that's what exists today, and so we're looking to, through this plan, to reverse those conditions found through the in need of redevelopment study. And so, and then, yeah, just for further clarification, it's bound by Bakeland Avenue, Claussen Street, and a railroad track to the south. So I'm gonna move further along into the plan to start talking about the plan, goals, and objectives. It's on page five. So we're looking to create land use requirements specific to this area that will effectuate the development of underutilized parcels that was found during the in need of redevelopment study. So we want to encourage redevelopment to increase tax ratables and build appropriate land uses within this section of Scataway, hence the light and industrial uses proposed through this redevelopment plan as that is what is surrounding it today. And really, we're looking to reverse the observed conditions found by the study so that it can improve into better economic and physical conditions. We want to utilize best practices of planning and engineering to develop a site that fits within the neighborhood and the zone and provide for new modern industrial facilities in Scataway Township. So under the land use plan, there are several principal permitted uses. Some of them actually match uses found in the current LI one zone. So research activities, I won't read them all, professional offices, experimental research, manufacturing, receiving, shipping, establishments involving printier publishing operations. But what is added is specifically empty tractor-trailer truck, box truck, and van storage is permitted so long that goods in active transit are permitted as long as those vehicles only remain at the property overnight, and they're not refrigeration units powered on in an active use to limit noise. So this includes truck terminals specifically for tenant use, not for public storage, and not for storage and sales of rentals or equipment. So really, we're just looking for very temporary empty tractor-trailer storage if the tenant needs it in relation to any warehousing or receiving or shipping use that may be going on in the redevelopment area. Moving on to permitted accessory uses, typically, you know, your typical parking and loading facilities. We are allowing offices within the principal structure, guardhouses, signs, gates, fences, emergency generators, EV charging, we'll get into that later, solar energy systems. And then number eight is a little bit different in that we are allowing, so long as it's conducted within the confines of the building, that a tenant can do minor repair of vehicles parked within the building onsite. So we're talking tire repair, fluid changes, simple chassis repair, fixing dents, battery replacement, things of that nature. They may do outdoor storage so long as it's non-hazardous materials and it's screened from
As little as ten minutes.
As long as it's a yeah, screened from adjoining properties and rights of way. And then other customary incidental uses to the property are allowed in accessory. So what's prohibited? Anything not listed herein, but also storage of anything hazardous or dangerous. No painting in motor vehicles, no paint booths, no daily truck parking operations, and no public repair garage. Under B, starting at the bottom of page six, we just had the bulk requirements for this redevelopment plan. So lot area two hundred thousand square feet, want a lot at least forty by one twenty-five feet. We have proper setbacks included. Impervious coverage can be up to seventy percent for the whole lot. And then it moves on to off-street parking where you'll find your typical parking sizes, and we also include setbacks for parking lots. We did add a number of additional requirements. I'll try and highlight some of the more important ones. You know, such as truck and trailer storage has to be onsite in delineated spaces and can't be stored longer than overnight. Or at least the goods within the trailers can't be stored longer than overnight in this trailer storage area. The main access drive can be ten feet from the side property line. Parking lots or trailer, trailer storage areas can be no closer than two feet if it's side yard and five feet if it's a rear yard, and we want a minimum width at least twenty feet and no higher than sixty-five feet. Right, so loading activities may only be permitted for the other permitted uses, so not the trailer storage usage along with sufficient vegetative screening or fencing. The next bullet points are really just about where the front, rear, and side property lines are and how to determine that. No idling on Claussen Street.
Madam Chair, can I jump in here for a second?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Since we're talking about some of the additions, we want to make sure that the in the redevelopment plan, that the applicant has to and the plan has to reconstruct Claussen Street from their property line out to Bakeland Avenue with curbing and sidewalk on the township fire training sign to connect with Bakeland Avenue and also install conduit line for fiber optic, too.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor, for that. Just so we're clear, I threw the conduit. You'll find out on page ten under utilities. You know, this includes installation of fiber conduit, and then if you scroll all the way down to infrastructure on page thirteen, that's where I say they have to fully reconstruct Claussen Street and then work with the engineering department to replace fencing and siding access gates for the fire training facility. But yes, full curve and sidewalk.
Just so the general public knows and the board members know, we just just reconstructed Bakeland Avenue. That was a four, four-plus million dollar reconstruction job out there. So we want to make sure we're cleaning up the neighborhood out there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Proceed, Mr. Clarkin.
Sure. Last ones are really related to noise. So the, any redeveloper that comes before the board for a site plan has to demonstrate that the site or the noise from the operations won't impact nearby residential, residential neighborhoods. And there is an option to install an eight-foot-high noise-reducing fence should it be necessary. So those are the major additional redevelopment requirements specific to this plan. I'm gonna move on to parking. So we have these five uses that are permitted that have different minimum parking requirements. So this is to make sure that it's adequately parked, which myself and all the professionals feel that it will be. So one space per three thousand square feet for the truck and trailer equipment service facility. For receiving and shipping, it's one space per two hundred square feet. Light manufacturing and assembly is one space per eight hundred, and an office is one per two hundred square feet. Plug-in electric charging stations shall be required in accordance with the ordinance and shall be fully operational at the time of occupancy. And then they are available to have the bonus credits be included with their overall parking requirements. We touched on the fiber conduit that I wanted to highlight. At the bottom of page ten, you'll see some of the science design standards. It's pretty standard, you know, one freestanding sign, no lo, no larger than a hundred square feet. Proper setbacks. You can have two wall signs, one tenant identification sign at the top of Claussen Street after they fully repave it, and then just directional signs. Typical lighting, LED. Nothing strobing or anything like that. You'll see landscaping or requiring buffers to compose of berms or dense mixture of deciduous trees to provide a year-round visual screen. One tree per two thousand square feet of parking spaces, pretty standard. And then if you know, any, we want native species, and if anything dies in the first two years, it's up to the property owner to replace it. I think yeah, environmental assessment. We did find possible existing wetlands on the property, so it'll be up to the redeveloper to work with DAP related to that for its development. I already mentioned this is consistent with the master plan. And I think the last thing is we already really touched on vacating relevant portions of Claussen, Brook Avenue, and Field Avenue, but that the redevelopers shall fully reconstruct Claussen Street and work with the engineering department on the fencing for the fire training facility.
Okay.
And I think those are all the highlights that I wanted to touch on tonight for this redevelopment plan. If you can take any questions.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of Mr. Clarkin on this redevelopment assessment?
Madam Chair, just, just a quick comment. Anybody who's ever driven down there when it was owned by Leila Bus Company is probably one of the most disrepair properties in Scataway Township. If any way we, as a board, can prod a developer to get that site cleaned up, that, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Any comments from, no more comments from the board, then we'll open it up to the public? Ms. Buckley?
No one's raising their hand, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no comments from the board, we'll close it to the public at this time. If there are no more comments or question, I'll take a motion. Board have members? Is anybody, everybody's muted?
Reverend Kenny, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and to redevelopment plan in regards to Bakeland Avenue and that that area needs to be cleaned up, that we may add that, too, that developer, whoever comes in, has to clean this area up because it was a mess when that bus company had left it that way.
This motion will for forwarding to the Township Council to review?
Your motion to recommend the adoption of the redevelopment plan by the council, Reverend Kenny?
Reverend Kenny?
Yes, that is correct. That's the motion I made.
Thank you, sir.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call of the full board?
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the resolution that was prepared just in case the, the board decided to recommend adoption if Ms. Saunders
So did you have that resolution?
Carol, you're muted.
Sorry, I just said I needed one second. Okay. Okay. Is that one you sent to me, Laura, in email?
Yeah, I sent several today, Carol. Yeah, you have.
Okay, hold on, let me look.
Yeah, it's just a resolution, it's just you want to adopt the resolution for the redevelopment plan.
Okay, I want to adopt the resolution for the redevelopment plan. Sorry, because I was off today, so I wasn't checking emails.
Um, sec, do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay, moving on, we have item eleven, a discussion of the ordinance amending eighty-eight Centennial Avenue redevelopment. Mr. Clarkin, you doing that one?
Number eleven is the JSM at Centennial Scataways application, Madam Chair.
Yeah, that was revised a few days ago, Madam Chair. The new one on the top is dated ten-six.
No, ten-eleven.
Oh, I have the old one. Ten-eleven.
Okay, JSM at Centennial Scataway Minor Subdivision. We are being heard by Mr. Peter Vesquez.
Believe Ms. Elgar is here on that matter.
Okay, fine. Ms. Elgar, you may proceed.
Thank you. Irina Elgar from Weingarten Law Firm on behalf of JSM at eighty-eight Centennial, the Scataway LLC. We're here for a minor subdivision. Lot sixty-seven oh three, lot eight. It's obviously located at eighty-eight Centennial. What we're trying to do is we are subdividing into two lots, which is why it's a minor subdivision. We have previously received minor subdivision approval in conjunction with our major site plan approval for the site. That was back in us. The resolution's dated September ninth, twenty twenty. That application, I don't know, you know, if you have it in front of you, it's twenty dash PB dash oh four oh five. We had previously come in for a major site plan and minor site subdivision with regard to Awawa, which we anticipate will be on lot A and a hotel which will be on lot B. The entire site's about five acres, and what we're trying to do is lot A is gonna be about two point oh four acres, whereas lot B, we're subdividing into two point nine five acres, and that's the, that's the lot for the hotel. We currently, we weren't able to perfect our minor subdivision in time because of the hundred ninety days limitation because we had the joint approval with, you know, the, the major site plan. So we're in the resolution compliance stage with regard to our major site plan. So we're here asking for the same minor subdivision, but this time we're trying to perfect it in time. So we're gonna try to streamline, you know, the conditions that are just relevant to the subdivision so that we can go ahead and perfect it in time. And I have Ron Allenbach with me here from he's the Director of Planning and Engineering, and he's gonna help me go through two of the review letters that were issued. So if he could be sworn in, I appreciate it.
Okay, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give would be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Ronald Allenbach, A U L E N B A C H.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to pull up the first review letter is the September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three CME letter from Mr. Ryan, Ryanon Street. So I'm looking through the letter, and I just wanted to note for the record a few items that we don't believe are relevant to or are not applicable to our site plan. Sorry.
Can you first have Mr. Allenbach just identify himself? Who he's with, et cetera, on the record?
Sure.
Uh, yes, thank you. My name, again, my name is Ron Allenbach. I'm the Director of Engineering, Planning, and Development for Edgewood Properties, the parent company for JSM at eighty-eight Centennial Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can proceed, Ms. Elgar.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the letter from, the CME letter first. Ron, do you want to go through and walk everybody through the subdivision that we're looking to approve?
Yeah, sure. As, as Ms. Elgar indicated, it's a minor subdivision. It was previously approved by this board. We're simply coming back this evening to seek reapproval of that subdivision so we can get it recorded within a timeframe. As Ms. Elgar indicated, it's two lots, lot A, which is the two point oh four four acres, is located on the corner itself of River and Centennial, and lot B, the two point nine five acre lot, is located to the rear with frontage on River Road and frontage as well on Centennial Avenue. It's a L-shaped lot. It's unchanged from what this board have previously approved back in two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so then moving on to the CME letter. I'm gonna start with page eight. I believe that that's where the comments start. And the first comment deals with the fact that we don't have any variances or waivers that we're seeking. So I just wanted to confirm that as well. We confirmed for number two that there's not gonna be any changes with regard to the site plan itself. We're just here for the, to reapprove the subdivision. Ron, if you could address number three?
Sure. Again, CME is, is looking for some additional clarification on the prior table on page seven with respect to some of the setbacks. And, and just for clarity, you know, the reason that they're left off the map with distance proximity to the residential zones is because you know, lot A is on a corner. It's not adjacent to the residential. It obviously has the buffer, if you will, of lot B between it and the residential zone to the south. But we'd be happy to add those distances and information to the chart.
And I think with regard to number four, we would definitely comply with providing deeds for approval for the for Mr. Barlow to approve before we file the deeds. Then number five, yes, we'll check with the tax assessor with regard to the lot numbers. With regard to six, there's no affordable housing fees, and we will obviously comply with any that do apply with regard to the site plan. But not, you know, there's, I don't, there's nothing with the subdivision that's gonna apply. And number seven is just a, a statement. And number seven is just a a statement. And again, there's no changes, though, to the site plan itself. Um. And again, number eight, there's no changes to the site plan. And number nine, with regard to outside agency approvals, uh like I said, we're part, we're. Going through resolution compliance with regard to the site plan and you know, that that's not gonna be part of the subdivision itself. Um and I think the other letter.
Uh Irene, just before um you get to the the Township Staff Letter, uh just for clarification, um. The only other outside agency approval that would be required for the minor subdivision is Middlesex County Planning Board. And we have secured final approval for subdivision uh from Middlesex County Planning Board. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
And we'll provide the. Those with that letter with um separately. That could be a condition, obviously, for the subdivision. Um okay, oh. The next memo is from um it's also September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. Um we're dealing with the, I guess it's, the first one has to do with um all conditions of the prior uh approval. And we're gonna ask that all the conditions not apply to this subdivision. Because it's only just with regard to the subdivision. So we're just looking, we're gonna comply, obviously, with whatever the conditions are as they are. Related to the site plan, but not to the subdivision, just because that's what we want to try to avoid in this go around. Um and with regard to number two, again, that's part of the site plan. It has to deal with the stormwater maintenance manual. Um and that, again, will be part of the site plan and we will comply with that. Uh same thing with the EV charging stations. Um we're not changing anything that's already approved in the site plan. And number four, um Ron, that's what you were referring to with regard to the Middlesex County Final Subdivision, I believe, right?
Correct.
Um so if anybody has any questions?
Um. Uh members of the board, do you have any any questions of this witness?
Um Madam Chair, if I may, Dawn Corcoran. Um Ms. Elgar, with regard to the easements. I believe at the workshop meeting you had said that they were sent to the county. Have they now been recorded and are in place?
I don't have the recorded versions of them. I don't have them back yet. So they have been sent, but we still haven't received them back yet. But when we will definitely provide them and I understand that that's what you need for the.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have any questions? Okay, um Ms. Elgar, um I guess I should open it to the public. Um Ms. Buckley?
Unshare your screen.
I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. No problems.
Would you check with see if the uh see if any members of the public have any questions of this witness?
Anyone in the public have any questions or comments? No one, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Uh public portion, but this witness is closed. Ms. Elgar, do you have another witness?
Uh no, we don't. Um and I thank everybody um for their time this season, this evening.
Okay, men, uh you've heard the testimony, members of the board. Um. Would you care to make a motion?
Dawn, you're muted if if you're making the motion.
I am so sorry. Um Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve uh this application for the minor subdivision. Um I just want to say that, obviously, I understand that the conditions tied to the site plan. Um will be, you know, the they're going through resolution compliance as Ms. Elgar had stated. However, those easements do have to be in place. Prior to the township signing the subdivision deed.
All right.
Carol Saunders, second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
So we have adjourned um item number Marion Court?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was fiddling around with the folder. Number twelve Marion Court Trust was adjourned.
So we're down to the last item, which is adjournment.
Um well, number thirteen is an um discussion item on the ordinance amending eighty-eight Centennial Avenue redevelopment plan.
Okay, shall we proceed with that?
Yeah. So essentially, this um. Follows the subdivision that the board um just granted in that the. The ordinance that was adopted by the council indicated that the hotel had to be built completely first. Before the Wawa could be built. And the council unders- uh has passed an ordinance taking out the sentence that says the hotel must be constructed before the CO. And the CEO issued before the convenience store could beginning to be built. So they've taken out that piece of the ordinance because it's a land use ordinance that gets sent to the planning board. For your review and compliance um with the master plan. Obviously, the master plan envisions the Wawa and the hotel. It's just a chicken and an egg type of thing and this allows the one to go forward without being tied to the the hotel. So that's the, it's a literally on half a sentence that's getting taken out by the council. And that's what's being sent to the planning board. To indicate if they.
Uh Mr. Barlow, if I could jump in, but I also believe that there's benchmarks that they have to meet as far as the construction of the hotel. And maybe Ms. Ms. Corcoran can.
I'm I'm not aware of that.
I I thought there were supposed to be benchmarks.
There may be benchmarks that were set forth in the re- in the developers' agreement.
Yeah, there's benchmarks that they have to uh.
Yeah, but but in the ordinance change is just that one line. The developers' agreement would obviously contractually bind them.
Right.
So if the board has any questions, otherwise it would be um there. Be appropriate for the board to make a motion concurring and recommending the council. The council amendment is consistent with the master plan.
Would someone like to make that motion as Mr. Barlow presented it?
Dawn Corcoran, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Reverend Kenny, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
And Madam Chair, in keeping with the strict timeframes that the council has to act on. I took the liberty of preparing a motion in anticipation of the the board acting this evening.
A motion or a resolution?
I'm sorry, resolution. I apologize. Like Ms. Saunders should have it, so.
Ms. Saunders, if you have that resolution, you may proceed. You're muted.
Sorry.
No problem.
Okay, let me just look. Oh, yep, eighty-eight Centennial. Okay, Madam Chairman, I'd like to memorialize the ordinance amending um. The redevelopment plan for eighty-eight Centennial Avenue.
Second, do I have a second?
Second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Are there any other matters before us, Mr. Barlow?
Yes, Madam Chair, the next item is a discussion item for one hundred Springfield LLC. I believe Mr. Mo- uh Arch is here.
Except that he's got a bald head now.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith is here. How are you, sir?
I'm good. Mr. Arch had a nickel course. You know, we lawyers are required to get so many credits of uh continuing legal education. So he asked me if I would sit in for him and that's why I'm here. Uh relat- relatively straightforward matter. Uh Madam Chairman, this is uh Hundred Springfield LLC. Uh we represent the uh that client, obviously, for the record. Uh back in September of two thousand and twenty-one, the board was kind enough to grant. Uh an approval for an expansion of their warehouse at this location by approximately twenty thousand square feet. Uh at the hearing, architectural plans uh were provided to the board. Showing the expansion as being constructed from brick and masonry, matching the existing warehouse. And subsequently, it's now two years later, the design of the expansion has been revised. And instead of brick, concrete panels are now proposed. Uh and even though the material being used for the expansion was not a major discussion item at the hearing. Since it was changed, we felt it was prudent to come back to the board and make sure the board has no objections to the substituted materials. Uh we will tell you that the concrete uh are uh. Going to be painted to match a portion of the existing structure. We're also gonna tell you that the buildings. That the the building that's gonna have the concrete panels is uh not even visible. Not that it's an ugly view, but it's not not really visible to the. To the public very much and that um we want to make sure that the board's okay with it because uh. To go forward, I think uh the building department would feel mu- uh more comfortable if we knew that we had discussed this. And this can either be a field change or it could be uh just a matter of there's no objection. So I have um a witness, uh Mr. Lance Blake, who is our architect. I'd ask that he be called and sworn so that he can give testimony.
Okay. Mr. Blake, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give would be truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Lance Blake, B L A K E.
Thank you.
Mr. Blake, for the record, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
Yes, uh uh I am the president uh and owner of the architectural firm of Rockmine and Blake. Located in Livingston, New Jersey, uh practicing architecture since nineteen eighty-two roughly.
You've appeared before many planning boards and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Uh yes, I have and I testified before this board, you know, at the last uh uh go around for one hundred Springfield.
Okay, and you were accepted that time as an architect, correct? Correct? That you were accepted as an architect in two thousand?
Yeah, I I'm licensed and uh my license is in good standing. I hold the masters and bachelors from Tulane University. Um and as I said, I've been practicing architecture for almost forty years.
Madam Chairman, I'd ask that uh Mr. Blake be accepted as a licensed architect in New Jersey.
So accepted.
Thank you. Now, we we have an exhibit. What's that? We have an exhibit and uh we'd like to put it on your screen, so it's in front of the board. Uh and let me ask uh Laura, Dawn, how do we do that?
On the bottom, right dead center, it says share screen. I believe you just clicked that. I honestly, Bob, have never done it.
Yeah, if you have it on your computer, you would share screen and then pull it up.
Yeah, there's an icon on the bottom.
Right in the middle, when you bring your cursor down, it'll light up. It'll say like participants, Q and A, chat, share screen.
Actually, right after chat, it's a raise hand and settings and then more. So we'll try more. How about more? Let's see.
Looks like share screen is ne- is between chat and record.
We don't have that. We don't have that on our s- on the screen. Says it goes participants, Q and A, chat, raise hand, settings, and more. And more says stop incoming video when we hit it. So let's see. Is there anything else?
After chat, chat, it says share.
It's not on our. Not on our screen.
Mr. Blake have the exhibit?
I'm trying to think of how I can pull it up. Excuse me.
We're permitted to share.
What's that?
I don't think we're permitted to share.
No.
No, there's permission.
You you may, you may need to wa- depending upon how wide the uh the webinar is on your screen, you may need to widen the window. And then I might open up the icon if you don't have it.
Okay, we widen the window. So that it covers the whole screen. And there's still no sharing function.
No.
All right, and uh let me just ask Mr. Blake, did you find this uh, is there a way that you can send it to the uh to the board?
I'm looking for it.
Okay, give us one second, please. How about screen sharing this?
It's on.
It's on?
Yeah, but it won't let us do it.
It's it's so the function is on, but it won't let us do it.
We don't have it.
What's that?
We don't have it as an option, but it's permitted on our computer.
Who would give us permission?
Oh. Laura says there is, so it should allow us to.
Yeah, try it now, Blake.
Screen broadcast, um.
Bob, do you want to go on to perhaps?
Yeah.
Thirty Duke and let Mr. Blake look for it in the interim and come back to him? I I mean, I don't know.
Well, I I I mean, I could I could also describe it. Um.
Hold up a picture? I mean, I think we all have it as a part of our package.
Oh, Laura.
Correct.
Is it colorized? Uh?
No.
Yeah, it's very simple color. Yeah, basically, what 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 you have is the elevation and what we are uh proposing. Is basically to paint the precast the same color as as the uh the darker shade of brick. Um and uh you know, one 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 of the the main reasons for for the change is constructability. Uh nobody really is building masonry, you know, block and brick buildings and uh it just didn't make sense. And uh you know, the building basically is a is, you know, the addition is in the back of the building. It's really not visible. Um you know, off of New England Road, it's that's a dead end. Uh backs up to another industrial building and uh really has no impact on on any of the neighbors. So we're asking for accommodation. Oh, there it is.
Let me interrupt for one second.
There we go.
Picture. We have it on up us on one of our laptops, so we're holding up so you can take a look at it. We're talking about the section to the right. Uh you see the darker brown building? That's the uh concrete panels. They'll be uh painted to match the uh brick on the left, the right, the left-hand side of the picture, correct, Mr. Blake?
Yeah, so so the existing building is composed, I mean, the building was uh was built in like the early eighties. Maybe even late seventies by my firm before I was actually there. Um and uh you know, it was a brick and block building, which was common at the time. And uh you know, there were two different. And, you know, there were two different colored bricks, there was, you know, a dark brown, and then there was a buff color. And the addition in the back, as I, you know, explained, was originally designed for, you know, to match, try to match the building. But, you know, from a constructability point of view, and and, and, you know, how quickly the, you know, the building can go up with, with prefabricated panels. And that's how everybody's really building today. They're building either tilt-up or, or with precast for these, you know, industrial buildings, especially larger, larger volume buildings, taller buildings. So that precipitated the, the change, and we appreciate.
And if I can ask you, from your point of view as an architect for a good, long period of time, this is not, is not offensive to the aesthetics of the, of the building, is it?
No, no, not at all.
Right, but we do want to make sure the board's okay with it. That's, that's the real reason we're here tonight. And I'd ask, Madam Chairman, if there are any questions from board members, we'd be happy to respond to them.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the testimony of Mr. Blake and Mr. Smith. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Smith, as a condition of the prior resolution of approval, the applicant was to work with Mr. Hinterstein to resolve any landscaping issues. If, and I would assume, and you have no objection to that, that would obviously continue. And if the change in the colors or the panels necessitates him requesting additional or change in the landscape, I assume the applicant would have no objection to that, correct?
I would assume not. The only, the I believe that Mr. Lanza Fama, who's our engineer, is making certain with Mr. Hinterstein that he's satisfied with everything as, as, right as we speak, you know, he's
Sure, so, and if Henry said, put in a different type of bush or something because of the colors, I assume
We would have no objection to that, but we do want to, we do want to make sure the board is okay with our materials. And I, I don't even know if you need a resolution, maybe just a statement to the, to the staff that there are, there are no issues with the, with the concrete panels as opposed to the, as opposed to anything else, and it's a satisfactory way to deal with it.
Meanwhile, I, I would agree with you, Mr. Smith, unless Dawn has any objection that, you know, as you termed it, a field change, because I think the resolution conditions that are already in place can address any issues Mr. Hinterstein or the township has.
I think that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I am fine with that. I know the applicant is working through resolution compliance at this time. I agree with Mr. Smith, Mr. Blake, I mean, the, obviously, the additions to the rear of the property, it's not really that visible, and you're completely surrounded by other industrial properties, so staff is comfortable with the change.
I think we still have to open it to the public.
No one's raising their hand, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. Close to the public. Board, you've heard the testimony and representations made by these, by Mr. Smith and Mr. Blake. Do you have a motion? Would anyone like to propose a motion?
Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I'd like to approve, propose this motion and approve this application that it goes forward, and that they comply with the Mr. Henry Henry Hinterstein in regards to any tree replacement or colorations to match with the, the building.
We'll have a second.
Carol Saunders, second.
Thank you. Throw a call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
One last matter, number fifteen on the agenda, thirty Duke Transfer Warehouse, twenty-three PB fifteen slash sixteen V. The applicant's is proposing a freestanding sign and outdoor storage, and I believe Mr. Smith is here on that one also.
That is correct. Madam Chair, for the record, Bob Smith, I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, and I'm here, here tonight representing the thirty Duke application. We are basically here to amend a preliminary and final site plan, which we received several years ago, back in two thousand and twenty-one. And basically, the only real change is that we're asking for the approval of a four-foot-high monument sign of twenty-four square feet, and to be placed ten feet from the Duke Road right of way. We have three minor bulk variances. Let me describe them to the board. One is the front yard setback. You're required eighty feet in the zone, we're at seventy-nine point fifty-five feet related to the canopy. Required freestanding signs shall not be located closer than fifty feet from the front yard property line, and we're proposing a freestanding sign ten feet from the front yard property line. And then finally, outdoor storage shall meet all the required setbacks for the zone, fifty-foot side yard setback. We're proposing outdoor storage located at fifteen point nine feet from the side yard property line. Little background is, would be good to put on the record before we put on our witnesses. When the previous site plan was approved in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a canopy projection on the building shown at that time. But for whatever reason, it was not identified as a variance at the hearing. It projects a few inches into the front yard setback. It is absolutely de minimis, and we're merely asking to memorialize at this time what was overlooked in two thousand and twenty-one. So that's the eighty-foot front setback where we have seventy-nine point fifty-five. When we received the approval in two thousand and twenty-one, we had not finalized a sign package at that time. And one of the conditions of that approval was to come back before the board if we were proposing any non-conforming signs. The monument sign that, that we're proposing tonight is located ten feet from the property line. And you're gonna, you're gonna hear from our witnesses that this is absolutely consistent with the other monument signs within the township, and is for finding the property, wayfinding is a phrase that's frequently used, and for safety. Also, if you take a look at Mr. Hinterstein's report, he indicated that its placement is reasonable and the size is modest. And then finally, we're happy to say that we have a new tenant in the building, and Scadaway never wants to have empty buildings. The new tenant is Carrier Enterprise Northeast. And you may be familiar with Carrier HVAC units. Part of the plan is to utilize an outdoor storage area which is permitted to store HVAC units. It does require a setback variance, but as you'll see, there's ample existing natural screening, and we'll be further screening it with some additional fencing, and we'll be complying with all the professional comments and conditions. I have two witnesses for you tonight. One is Evan Gilbert, who is the president of Carrier Enterprise Northeast. And the second is Brian Enes, who's our licensed professional engineer. With your permission, Mr. Madam Chairman, I'd like Mr. Evan Gilbert to be sworn so that he can give testimony.
You may call your witness.
Mr. Gilbert, can you please raise your right hand?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yeah, it's Evan Gilbert, E.V.A.N.G.I.L.B.E.R.T.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert, for the record, what is your title and position with Carrier Enterprise Northeast?
I'm the president of the region.
Okay, and been in the business a while?
Yeah, I have, yep.
Yeah, how many years?
I've been with the company fifteen years.
Okay. So would you tell us a little bit about Carrier Enterprise?
Yeah, we're a distributor of residential and commercial heating and air conditioning equipment.
Okay, and you're familiar with this site and the proposal that's before the board?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Hinterstein, in his report, had a couple of questions with regard to our project, and we might as well have the, the top guy answer them, namely you. So, his first question was, the proposed sign is modest at best and appears to be located in an appropriate location for a double-sided sign of this size. The applicant should clarify that the sign will in fact be double-sided. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and then secondly, will the proposed sign be illuminated? If so, will it be internally illuminated or from another exterior source?
I believe it's internally.
Okay, so it's yes on everything. What is going to be stored in the outdoor area?
What we'll store in the outdoor storage area, it's commercial HVAC equipment, specifically really rooftop units. So if you think of like a, a strip mall, would be the types of units that would be installed on top of buildings like that.
All right, any residential?
No.
The, is any repair, maintenance, or assembly of these units going to occur outside?
No, it's, it's just storage.
Okay. And one of the suggestions in the reports was, would we be, would we agree to an eight-foot solid or slatted fence?
Yeah, we, we typically look to, to have that, we require that.
So we're happy to agree to that, and then there, there's a limit on stacking, which would be twelve feet in height. Is that something we can live with?
Yep, that's, that's we target as well.
Great. Anything else you want to add?
No, just looking forward to getting into the location. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair,
Board members, do you have any questions of this witness? Hearing no questions, we may be able to call your next witnesses and then open it to the public for both witnesses.
Okay. I ask that Brian Enes be called, he's our licensed professional engineer, so that he can be sworn and give testimony.
Mr. Enes, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about to give we the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, it's Brian Enes, B.R.Y.A.N.E.H.N.E.S., and I work at Bowler Engineering, and the address is thirty Independence Boulevard, Suite two hundred in Warren, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Enes, have you ever been accepted by this board as a PE?
Yes.
When was that?
Back in two thousand and twenty-one, when we got the original approval. I did the hearing.
Okay, and have your credentials deteriorated since two thousand and twenty-one?
No, and my license is in good standing.
Good. Madam Chair, do you need anything else in the way of qualifications?
Acceptable.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if you would, Brian, take us through the three minor variance requests.
Yep. So I'm gonna share screen. Let me know if everyone sees that. Yes, so on your screen now is the currently, the approved, the site plan that we submitted to the board. This is sheet C dash three oh one, site layout plan dated July sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, as revision one. And again, it was the same plan that was submitted as part of the package. The property, as mentioned, is thirty Duke Road, block forty-two oh two, lot seven. The lot size is approximately ten acres, and it's located in the LI dash five light industrial zone, where warehouse is a permitted use. The previous approval, as mentioned, included a seventy-eight thousand four hundred ten square foot building with associated parking, loading area, stormwater management facilities, landscaping and lighting, and that was approved back in May of two thousand and twenty-one. The improvements, as mentioned previously, that we are here this evening seeking approval for are the freestanding sign setback, the outdoor storage setback, and the setback for the front yard of the canopy. So I'm gonna walk through one by one. First, I'm gonna zoom in to the freestanding sign inset that is located on sheet C dash three oh one. A freestanding sign is now proposed since a tenant has been acquired, as mentioned previously. The detail is shown in the bottom right corner, and as more as you can see, a monument sign as opposed to a freestanding sign. The sign is similar to the one that's located at one oh one Circle Drive. It is internally illuminated, as mentioned before, and we are only proposing one freestanding sign where one is permitted. The sign area is twenty-four square feet on each side, where a hundred fifty square feet is allowed by code. And the height above grade is four feet where twenty feet is allowed. So we're significantly under the two requirements for both area and size in terms of height. And as part of this application, we are requesting the ten-foot setback from the front property line where fifty is proposed. And we believe, based on the constraints of the property, location, and limited height and size that's being proposed, this location makes the most sense for the development. And as mentioned previously, the sign is internally illuminated and double-sided, as was mentioned in one of the professionals' letters. The second relief we're looking for is a setback variance of the outdoor loading area where fifty feet is required and fifteen point nine feet is proposed. And that area is in an already impervious concrete area in the loading area. That is not going to increase impervious, and again, it's fifty feet is the requirement. We are proposing fifteen point nine feet. The area will be approximately ten thousand square feet, and as mentioned before, store HVAC and rooftop equipment. This is storage only, and there is no repair or construction of any equipment on the property. And a fence will be provided around it with eight feet tall in height, chain link, and privacy slats. There's also additional screening from the adjacent property because of existing landscaping and vegetation that's already along the property line at the rear of the property. And as also mentioned previously, the height of stacking will not exceed twelve feet, as requested in the professionals' letter. The final relief this evening is the seventy-five, seventy-nine point five five foot setback of the canopy on the building. And again, as mentioned earlier, there is no changes to the building in terms of it actually getting physically closer to the property line. The building is still set at the same location. We are now just requesting the formal approval for the overhang of the canopy. And the canopy overhang, I'll just go over it with my cursor so everyone can see, starts approximately fifteen feet to the west of the front door, and then basically goes along the curbing and then the side of the building and ties in about twenty-five feet to the south of the building. And again, this is a de minimis improvement, and actually improves the aesthetics of the building. And is no change to the actual building that was proposed and approved previously, it's more just getting the formal approval for the canopy itself. And I believe, in terms of the professionals' letters, we hit the majority of the comments, but we don't have any issues with abiding to any other comments in the professionals' letter.
And how about, did you describe the natural screening that surrounds this property?
Yeah, so along the, and again, south is to the bottom of the, or north is to the bottom of the page. Along the eastern property line, there is existing vegetation, both on our site and the adjacent property. So not only is there going to be screening because of the fence that the applicant has agreed to install, but also due to the existing vegetation in that area, both to the side and the rear of the property. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I did not mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
No problem, and the rear of the, the property is actually bordered by two eighty-seven as well, so there are no actual developments behind the property.
That's great. If you would also mention to the board the rolling locking gate for security purposes.
Yeah, so as part of access into the gated area, there, there will be a rolling gate. It's not mechanical in nature or anything. It's just your typical gate that can roll one way or the other to access inside of the fenced area for the storage.
Terrific. Is there anything else that we've missed?
I believe that's everything for this evening.
Okay, Madam Chairman, Mr. Enes is available to the board for questions.
Board members, you've heard the testimony, Mr. Enes. Do you have any questions of this witness?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, that rolling gate, there's not gonna be nobody wa, monitoring like a security guard or anything, is there?
Would we have a, would we have a security guard there?
That is the question I asked, yes.
We, we would not. No, we, we have security cameras. Typically, security cameras and a fence are sufficient to protect the product.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know, because sometimes persons have that because of the type of equipment you have there, but there, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other members of the board have questions? Okay, hearing no questions, we can open it to the board for questions from both witnesses that were presented this matter. Ms. Buckley?
You, you need to open it to public, you opened it to the board, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Would you please ask, uh, this is now open to the public, would you check with the public to see if they have any questions of either of the two witnesses that we've heard from in this application?
No one's raising their hand, Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public. Um, Mr. Smith, do you have any closing comments? Were you ready?
Just the, the thirty-second obvious one, which is, Piscataway, like any dynamic community, needs businesses that are functioning and employing people and paying taxes. And Carrier is a well-known name in the HVAC world. It's a great thing that they want to be in our community, and it's good for our local economy, and the mayor always likes to get those quarterly tax checks. He, he opens the envelopes personally, just to make sure. So, so we think this is a good thing for Piscataway, we hope you'll approve it.
Thank you, members of the board, you would, you'd like to propose a motion in this matter.
Uh, Madam Chair, Reverend Kenny, I make a motion that this application be approved. They're in compliance with everything, and there's nothing really that concerns me, not even the canopy. I think it's, it's quite straightforward, the application.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman, Carol Saunders, second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran? Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you much, members, thank you very much.
Mr. Smith, it was requested, and, and I prepared in anticipation a resolution of approval for the three resolutions based on the fact that the board's professional staff did not take exception to them. And I believe Ms. Saunders has a motion if the board wishes to entertain it at this time.
Second. Okay. All right, Laura, did you send that to me or is it in email?
Yes, Carol, I sent all of them to everyone.
Is it, it's an email?
Yes, you could just adopt Thirty Duke.
You sent them today, I haven't checked my email today, that's why I'm asking.
It's titled amended preliminary and final major site plan in bulk variances.
Okay, hold on, I'm sorry.
Carol, you could just say you're adopting twenty-three PB fifteen sixteen as amended for Thirty Duke.
Okay.
Just as the agenda says.
Okay, sorry. Um, I'm memorializing that resolution for Thirty Duke.
Uh, we have, it's been moved in second to approve this application, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Reverend Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members, have a great evening.
You too. I believe this completes our agenda for the evening.
Uh, Madam Chair, I just want to wish everybody a happy Halloween.
Thank you, you too, man.
Well taken, yeah, well taken. Our next planning board meeting will be November the eighth, everyone stay safe.
See you then.
Good night, thank you.
Have a wonderful day, everyone.
Wilson Goblin.